Alderman to order. On Tuesday, November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty at seven thirty P. M. via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lumbering and Alderman Lou will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number twelve pursuant to executive order two thousand and twenty dash four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. The meeting ID is eight seven four zero seven six six zero two one two, and the passcode is six seven two five eight six. The public may also view the meeting via channel sixteen. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashville's website at Nashua NH dot gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the National Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel sixteen, please call six zero three eight two one two zero four nine, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Clay.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm alone.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am by myself and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I am present. I am by myself and I can hear and see everybody.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jettie.
I am here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present and alone in the room.
Alderman Laws.
Yeah, I'm glitching. I'm here. I can hear you right now and I'm alone.
Thank you. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gathrey.
I am present. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wolfshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Fifteen in attendance present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does Mayor wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. There were a few items that I wanted to discuss with you. First, of course, we are still facing the COVID nineteen pandemic. And as we've seen across the country, we have a increase in the number of cases here in New Hampshire and in Nashville specifically. I mean, not nearly as extreme as we've seen in some parts of the country, but certainly much more than we had over the summertime. We have a weekly meeting with the hospitals and of course, our public health department. And we have about, as of yesterday, about three hundred and fifty active cases in Nashua. We have contacts, people that public health is working with, who have been in contact with those positive patients. About three hundred and seventy-two contacts whom potentially were exposed to the disease. We've seen outbreaks in many places around the city, restaurants, publics, nonprofits, the city hall, some of our schools. And I think we will, based upon the medical opinions that we're following and the public health experts that we're dealing with, we will continue to see these as the winter progresses. The scientists and the medical experts predicted that December of two thousand and twenty would be the worst month. And it seems like that's shaping up. Apparently that has something to do with the cold weather, the fact that people are more inside. And of course, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, so I want to caution people. It is, we all want to be with our families and friends during the holidays during Thanksgiving. That's one of the things that we enjoy the most. That is something we need to be careful about this year, unfortunately, because we are finding around the country that family gatherings are a way that COVID nineteen is often spread from, you know, one person to another and then on to another. As one of the, as maybe Bobby Bagley, Director of Public Health, said in one of our meetings, you know, when you invite someone into your home, you are, no matter how close a friend, no matter who that is, you're also inviting in all of the people they've had contact with for the last couple of weeks. So please, please be careful. Consider wearing your masks. One more item regarding COVID nineteen, Madam President. The Board of Health met today and we've been talking with Alderman and they and I have been talking with Alderman Laws and others about the phenomenon that's occurring in Nashville, which is that the curfew, which has been imposed down in Massachusetts, a nine thirty curfew for bars and restaurants, has had the effect of sending Massachusetts residents up into New Hampshire to go to bars and other establishments after nine thirty. And it has caused our bars and restaurants to get more crowded. Now, that's good from a business perspective, but certainly we find, we find as the epidemiologists, the scientists tell us across the country that bars are another place where it's, there is a high likelihood of anyone who's positive spreading it to others because people are, have their masks off when they drink or eat and often in close proximity, especially in a bar. So we, the Board of Health has been grappling with the idea of should, should Nashua impose a curfew? I don't believe they came out with a clear recommendation, but at that public Board of Health meeting, a number of the members of this board, the Board of Alderman, were present and may have some thoughts about that. Maybe to, it might not be the best thing to do this at the last minute before the Thanksgiving holiday without any notice, without any preparation. But still, it's taking additional protective measures in addition to the mask ordinance that we've enacted and also amended is something that we need to consider. Now, Madam President, I know you, we, you, the Board of Alderman had on your agenda, the firefighter's contract that's been proposed. We talked about this at some length at the Budget Committee last night. And I will repeat some of those remarks. I know we all appreciate the firefighters and our other first responders for everything they do during the COVID nineteen epidemic and elsewhere, at all other times. And many of our firefighters have served the city well for, for a long, long time. And we have a former deputy chief on the Board of Alderman. Public servants all. But as we consider any contract, any labor agreement, I think what our citizens want, and I believe as mayor, I need to be accountable to them, that I have a very primary responsibility to them. I think what they want is a contract which is fair, both to our employees and to our, our citizens, our hardworking taxpayers, the people who pay the bills. And I know, given the very significant financial challenges that we're dealing with, which I will detail in a moment, the, our citizens need us to be careful in terms of making long-term commitments, committing about creating budgets which will not be sustainable, which could result in service cuts and are very large tax increases. And they deserve, of course, our, our being straightforward with them about what we're committing to and how this might affect them. Now, the firefighter's contract includes, yes, ten percent in COLAs, but other raises are wrapped into it. So our, our CFO has priced it at fifteen point five percent over four years. In my opinion, this is more than the city can afford at this time. Now, some people have suggested, well, the city doesn't want to give the firefighters a contract. That is absolutely not true. We offered eleven percent over four years, eleven percent back in December. That offer is still on the table. Now, that offer of eleven percent matched, matched what this board, the Board of Alderman, agreed to provide to our police sergeants about a year ago. That was pre-COVID and pre the other challenges that I'm about to mention. At the time, I said, well, we, I thought we should do closer to the cost of living. But you decided otherwise, we weren't really that far apart, but you gave them, agreed to eleven percent. And that's how we arrived at the eleven percent for the firefighters, because there's been discussion in this chamber. We're virtual now, I know, Madam, Madam President, but in the chamber about uniformity, the need to be fair to all concerned. And so that's where we came up with the eleven percent based upon what had previously been approved by the, by the Board of Alderman. Now, the financial challenges we're facing, we've talked about to some degree. The one we've been talking about the longest is the healthcare costs. The healthcare has risen around six million dollars, six point three over the last couple of years. That's a twenty percent increase approximately. That equates to a three and a half, excuse me, about a three percent tax increase. Now, over the last two years, two and a half, two point six last year, three point nine this year. Taxes have gone up six, six and a half percent approximately in total. Nearly half of that is due to healthcare, rising healthcare costs. And we have come up with a plan to address that. And if we can implement our plan to all employees in the city, no excuses, no exceptions, we can save money for the city, we can save money for our taxpayers, a significant amount of money. And we've seen there's a contract, another contract before you tonight. That's another group that's agreed to this, these set of changes. That will be four or five. There's one that's coming forward. I think it's four that you've seen, and there's another coming forward very soon. Now, but we, if we want to save money on this, we need to get this for all employees, because if we make an exception for one, then the groups coming forward later will also want that same exception. In the firefighter's contract, not only do we not get the concession that we wanted, but the fire commission, without consulting, the, our, without talking with Kim Kleiner or personnel or anyone like that who knows about this healthcare situation, or our expert, or the city's consultants, WBS, fashioned their own healthcare plan, which does not meet the city's needs. It's nothing that the city would ever propose or want. And the most unfortunate thing about it, it does not reduce costs. It doesn't even leave costs the same. It raises the cost of healthcare. It increases the, the cities, I think the number is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than if it weren't even there. We cannot afford to begin that precedent of not, and reverse this entire trend. Instead of reducing costs, increase them for employees, at least that provision, regardless of the wages, that provision should not be in this contract. Because I think if we pay the firefighters fourteen and a half or fifteen percent, it is fair to ask for the same agreement that other employees have made regarding healthcare, at least in my opinion. Now, Madam President, the additional financial challenges we're facing are, in addition to this healthcare thing, a few months ago, we learned that we're going to be paying, that the state is slamming us with a four point four million dollar increase in the pensions. I know the Board of Alderman is, and the members of legislature are trying to do something about it, but we don't know. We were not successful in the past with a change like this. So we got four point four million dollars of downshifting right there. The state raising our property taxes. We also have another action that we've learned about in the last week or so. The state is again raising our property taxes by reducing, by projecting a six million dollar reduction in school aid. So when you put these two things together, Madam President, this is a ten, ten point four million dollar local tax increase imposed by the state of New Hampshire. Now, again, we are working with members of the board here, the five who are in the legislature and our entire legislative delegation to try to turn those things around. But assuming those do not change, that is a five percent tax increase going into next year, before we even get to the city budget, before we get to the firefighters, before we get to the police, the schools and all the other needs we have. So we're looking at a very significant tax increase. And I think therefore, we need to be extra cautious when considering long-term commitments and commitments for next year. And I know the Budget Committee passed this on a six to one vote. I know the firefighters have said that they'd like to work with the community. Even if the wage increases, you know, you, you understand my, my thinking on the wage increases, but the, the healthcare change that increases the cost is maybe even more unfortunate in terms of, because there is an area where we can save money if we can get this across the board. And, and then there's more money, less, the taxes are lower, more money for services. It, it's a very, in my opinion, a big mistake to raise the cost of healthcare at this moment. Or the, to buy an increase, paying more than the reduction is even worth, which is what the, what the, what the proposal in the firefighter's contract is. So the other, the, I think you understand my, my thinking, Madam President. I mean, I know we've, we agree on a lot of things. There's some disagreement here. I do believe that the firefighters deserve and a good contract. That's why we offered eleven percent, and that's been on the table for a year or so. So I hope you will at least consider these points as you think about how to all of you vote on this issue tonight. Finally, Madam President, we do have the, I, I think this is coming up next. We have the, 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 the Gate City Light Award, which we're going to give to the Y, a great organization. And I think when we get there, I have a proclamation, but the, I note that the Y held their one hundred and thirty-fourth annual meeting the other night, like, like a few days ago. I, I think it was late last week, maybe last Thursday. And so we have an organization here who's been serving since the eighteen, the eighteen eighties. And still is very, very relevant. And as you will hear from the proclamation, as everybody knows anyway, they are doing a lot even today and have been doing good, good service in the community for a hundred and thirty-four years. So I'd like to congratulate, congratulate them. And if there are any questions or comments, I would be glad to answer them, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor, Alderman Lopez.
Sorry, I would just like to thank the mayor for his comments regarding the masking, the necessity of it and the increase of COVID nineteen in our city. The, the Board of Health is struggling with this. They're trying to figure out what guidance will work, how best to save lives. And they are definitely cognizant of the impact that this will have on businesses. But they asked us to make it very, very clear that we are facing a crisis. In the last fourteen days, we had over four hundred cases. We were talking back in March and April about flattening the curve. This curve is significantly steeper than that. And we are going into the holiday season where families will be gathering for Thanksgiving, families may be gathering for Christmas. Young, younger people are going out and drinking. This is a time where we all have to be extremely responsible. And this includes the businesses that are concerned about being singled out or impacted economically. It is the responsibility of the business that is providing that service to comply with the city's mask ordinance. You cannot process a cash transaction for someone who is not wearing a mask, and it is not safe to let that person be in your, your business if they're not complying with the ordinance to wear the mask whenever possible. This is important for businesses to understand that if we do need to make steps or take steps for public health, this is not an economic decision, and this is definitely not a punishment or penalization for crimes committed or anything like that. This is to save lives. This is to preserve our operational capacity in the event of a major, major outbreak. We're already seeing a tremendous outbreak now. We don't want to see one that starts to impact services where a significant number of police officers, firefighters, trash collectors are out sick. And we're seeing very widespread community-based transmission. So going forward over the next couple of weeks, the decisions and the outcomes that the Board of Health are presented with are going to be a function of how individual families choose to incorporate social distancing, hand washing and wearing masks in their, their celebrations. How businesses monitor their businesses and the populations they are bringing indoors into the, into their places of business. How they, how they take responsibility for making sure their customers are safe. Biology doesn't care about promises that we make. If we have an outbreak and we have more people that are getting sick, then we're going to have to take more steps to make sure that less people get sick. That's what the Board of Health is, is intended to do. They're doing very well at it, and they're focusing very much on science, numbers, facts, and what we know. This is not a political decision. This is a health decision. So I appreciate the attention that the mayor brought to this issue, and I would just encourage any member of the public to not only yourself consider this, but make sure that people around you that you love and you care about are practicing social distance, they're minimizing their discretionary interaction with other people, and they're wearing masks whenever possible in compliance with the city mandates and the statewide mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing up the subject and also say that everything that Alderman Lopez said is absolutely true. I attended that meeting also, and I was quite surprised to hear a person of business say that they, you know, they try to get everybody to, to wear the masks, but they're not always successful and they don't turn that person away. That's disturbing. We have a mandate that says that we have to do this. And I know it's hard on businesses, but it's going to be harder if that business gets closed. It's going to be harder for all those patrons who want to go there if that business isn't there. So we have to take this personal responsibility. We have to do what's right on all levels. And that's really where it comes down to is personal responsibility. Otherwise, harsher things will have to happen. We cannot go backwards. We already are. The bottom line is we are. I'm really interested in finding out what our ICU bed usage is and so on, but I know our hospitals are filling. I know our cases are going up. And today I sent out an email to my constituents and said, if you're a business owner, take responsibility. And it's better to turn away that customer and have them get angry at you than to have to close down your business. To employees, don't go to work when you're sick. To employers, don't ask employees to come. And for the rest of us, do the right thing, wear our mask. And I think wearing a mask is the least we can do, the really least we can do. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Responses to the remarks of Mayor? Seeing none?
Madam President, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Laws.
Okay, my video is off. I was just curious, are we going to be discussing this later on in the meeting? If, if there were any action that we decided that we should take?
I'm not aware of any action that we will be taking this evening on this.
All right. Then let me just chime in and say that I'm incredibly concerned about what's going to be happening tomorrow night in the city between all of the Massachusetts residents that'll be coming here to drink, all the people who live out of town will be coming to see their friends and families. And the fact that it's the second busiest drinking holiday of the year, it is just going to be an, an awful perfect storm for spreading COVID. And we're already doing terribly as a state and as a city, not, obviously not the healthcare workers, but as far as our numbers spiking and I implore all of you to think about whether or not we can do something to prevent this from happening, because I feel like we're going to be having a much different conversation in a couple of weeks if we don't. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman, Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I just would like to thank Mayor Donches for bringing up the interesting and trouble, bothersome information that we learned at the Board of Health meeting today. I, I know that the, the Board of Health and several members are here at the meeting with us and, but if they won't be speaking, I just want to share a couple of things that I found really moving that I think make a difference to, will make a difference to anyone who hears. And for instance, New Hampshire leads the country right now in growth of positivity. One point three six percent. And I think I have that right, but there are just two other things, because our Board of Health is very, very concerned about just getting this under control. New Hampshire has seven point one percent positivity rate. Mass has three point five percent positivity rate right now. So we've really switched and, you know, this is extremely high numbers. And I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Responses to the remarks of Mayor?
Alderman Gathrey. I agree with what the mayor said. I agree with my colleagues as well. I know that there are other people on the call from the community and from the health department that might want to chime in. So I just want to say that I agree with everyone. I strongly believe we need to look at something, do something, okay? Because we all have a lot of loved ones here. At least I know I do. And I want to make sure that they're pretty safe. And they're not as old as me. They're the younger generation. And I think we've mostly been focusing on the habits of the younger generation, or I would say the under thirty. um, the habits of the younger generation, or I would say the under thirty.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a point of order request.
Alderman Lopez.
Given that there are members of the public that may be interested in specifically discussing a topic which is not on the agenda, uh, would it be appropriate to suspend the rules so far as to allow them to speak at first public comment? And they're not to remain during the entire meeting? And if it is appropriate, when would I do that?
We could do that.
I would like to make that motion.
The motion is to allow for, but wait a minute. What are we allowing first before we vote on it? I mean, if we can't allow-
Allow the first public comment to be general public comment rather than restricted to items intended to be acted upon tonight.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I just think that it would be more appropriate for that motion to be made when we get to the first public comment period, not now, when we're in remarks with the, to the mayor.
Yeah, true.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. I was just actually intending to ask for clarification.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Okay, so I believe we're all set with remarks from, by the mayor, uh, responses to the remarks of Mayor. Recognition period. Gate City Light Award. I'm going to recognize the mayor for this.
Well, Madam President, as I mentioned, uh, our Y is a hundred and thirty-four years old, and this year we have the, of course, the, uh, committee that awards the Gate City Light Award. And they, as they've been doing for, since I was mayor the first time, have been awarding, awarding the Gate City Light Award to a nonprofit. And the proclamation, uh, that, uh, we've issued is as follows. Whereas the YMCA of Greater Nashville is this year's recipient of the Gate City Light Award. Each year, in honor of National Volunteer Week, the mayor's volunteer recognition committee honors an agency and its volunteers with this award for giving their time in the spirit of community and caring, as well as for making significant contributions to the city of Nashville. And whereas the YMCA of Greater Nashville and its volunteers give back to the community in many ways. In two thousand and nineteen, YMCA volunteers donated more than fourteen thousand hours of service, impacting thirty-five thousand individuals in Greater Nashville. YMCA Togetherhood volunteers helped gather three hundred and fifty diapers and other essentials for new parents for a community baby shower event and joined the Downtown Nashville Cleanup Day. Volunteers also regularly host activities of all types for senior citizens and youth. After-school homework helpers work with students in need as well as share their musical talents. And art fair volunteers annually run the early education event featuring artwork by YMCA kids. And whereas the YMCA strives to change lives in positive ways, this change occurs when a volunteer's work helps a child learn a new skill, when a family spends more time together, when a cancer survivor feels stronger, and when a senior citizen feels more connected to others. And whereas the mission of the YMCA is to instill values and provide opportunities for lifelong personal growth and the development of, of a healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. It's through this mission and the actions that the YMCA embodies that the Gate City Light Award is, uh, that's what the Gate of City Light Award is all about. Now therefore, I, Jim Donchas, Mayor of the City of Nashville and the Nashville Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim YMCA of Greater Nashville as the twenty-twenty recipient of the Gate City Light Award. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I see Mike LaChance is on our meeting, the CEO and president of the YMCA. Mike, did you want to, uh, say a few words?
Uh, very quickly, President Wiltshire, thank you. Uh, and thank you, Mayor, for the recognition as well. This is a very special award that I'm honored to accept on behalf of all of the hundreds of volunteers at the Y. Um, you know, as you said, they're all committed to making the city of Nashville a better place for its area residents. Um, we're blessed to have Terry McGrew, who is our volunteer coordinator. Uh, she is a person that really leads this effort, uh, in terms of recruitment, uh, support, uh, training, and placement. And again, I want to thank you very much for this, uh, wonderful award. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to all the volunteers and the great work you do at Y for a hundred and thirty-four years. That's pretty impressive. Okay, reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of November tenth, twenty-twenty, and the special Board of Aldermen meeting of November seventeenth, twenty-twenty, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public. From Laurie Wiltshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, calling a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen on December eighth, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty PM to discuss sewer user fees. From John Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Comptroller, regarding November fifteenth, adequate education grant estimate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. From Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Manager, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, relative to ten thousand dollars authorization request from the Board of Aldermen from the Conservation Fund for technical assistance services through the National Regional Planning Commission, NRPC. From Dorothy Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding R twenty-eighty-eight, correction to proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city and the International Association of Firefighters, Local seven-eight-nine, and summary of cost item changes in the proposed fire collective bargaining agreement. And from Linda McGee, Deputy Planning Manager, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen, proposed R twenty-ninety, authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at fifty-five Franklin Street, MAP sixty-eight, Lot fifty-three, and proposed resolution R twenty-ninety-four, omnibus resolution regarding new markets, tax, credit, transaction for the Performing Arts Center.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Alderman Lopez.
Missed my cue there. Um, I just wanted to make a motion for a public comment to include, uh, general public comment, um, for this first period to allow for a comment on, um, COVID-related, uh, issues and that the rules be so far suspended for such.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for general public comment at the first public comment period. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the court please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and one nay.
That motion carries. So, period for public comment relative to items on the agenda. So I'm going to let the public know that there is a three-minute, um, time limit on speaking. I, it looks like we might have quite a few people that need to, uh, want to speak this evening. So I'm going to take, uh, whoever wants to go first. Mr. T-Bone.
Yes, uh, thank you. I'd like to briefly comment first on R twenty-oh-ninety-four, new market tax credit. If anybody understands a complicated diagram, or a very complex disclosure by Moscoma Bank, I'll eat my hat. But I would like to note also, there's a several, well, I couldn't count it, many hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of fees are being paid, uh, through Moscoma Bank. I just want people to be aware of that. Now, the other one I'd like to comment to is R twenty-oh-ninety-three. This is the guaranteed maximum price for the construction project on the Performing Arts Center. Now, guaranteed maximum price is always a good thing to have, because it limits your exposure. However, in the estimate presented in Exhibit K to that resolution, you'll find that there was a construction estimate of eighteen point eight million dollars by the construction manager. That was reduced in Exhibit K to fifteen point eight million dollars. So what happened to the three million? Well, the three million shows a one point eight million being put into an FFE, two hundred thousand for an elevator to be removed, and a million dollars' worth of cats and dogs. Adds up to three million. But it's not clear where that is going to go to, because you have a, a twenty-five million dollar project. You have in Exhibit J, a long list of exclusions. They now have three million dollars that's being shifted, well, almost three million dollars being shifted from construction to other places. I've mentioned FFE. So what you need is a summary schedule just exactly how this project adds up to twenty-five million. And I'd further say that back in January two thousand and twenty, last time I looked at the budget, there was two point two million dollars of contingency money. One million dollars for owner's contingency, and one point two million for an endowment fund that is no longer needed. In my opinion, no longer needed. So you need a complete breakout on how you're going to get to twenty-five million, and how much of contingency is left, because you're going to need contingency money, because you have a long list of exclusions. And see, any of the old men asked for that during the finance committee meeting, when this was discussed, and I brought some of this up. And I hope this gets addressed by Tim Cummins, and he provides you some kind of a summary of the construction money of five fifteen point eight million, all the way to twenty-eight five million, which is the maximum authorized. And the project certainly ought to be built for twenty-five million. That's plenty of money. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Public comment, anyone?
I, I'd like to make public comment.
Ms. Scare, go ahead.
Beth Scare, one-eleven East Hobart Street. Um, first of all, I wanted to comment on the mayor's remarks about the six million dollars education aid. And, um, I'm sorry. Am I getting feedback? Oh, sorry. And, uh, my concern there is that we lost eight hundred and forty students from the schools, and it would be expected to lose millions of dollars in funding. And why did we lose eight hundred and forty students? Because the school is not offering in-person education, the school system. And why did that happen? Because the Board of Education, handpicked by the Nashville Teachers Union, that, that is what they wanted. So blaming it on the state is, uh, is beyond ridiculous. When we drove, we're driving students out of our schools, and meanwhile, the PAC is supposed to attract young people to the city, and we can't provide an adequate education. I don't think we're going to be attracting young people to the city. And the PAC is something, a place where we could be saving money if the, the mayor's worried about pension costs and worried about education costs. We could be saving money on that. We could be saving money on the Arlington Street Community Center. This new school that, um, for the preschool kids. I mean, the money is just, you guys are spending money like drunken sailors and blaming it on the state. It's ridiculous. And also, I, I wanted to say, for, especially for Alderman Schmidt and the mayor, I got my new Save Women's Sports shirt. They, Alderman Schmidt and the mayor got my Save Women's Sports flag taken down from the citizen flagpole. And I just wanted to remind everyone that women's sports are under threat. You can go to savewomensports.com and learn more about what the mayor and Alderman Schmidt are so upset and scared about, everyone hearing. And for that reason, they took down my flag. So, again, savewomensports.com, and thanks very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, as a point of order, don't we have restrictions against showing signage and making advertisements during public comment?
I don't, I'm not sure that we do, Alderman Lopez.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we do.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give public comment? Seeing no one. Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Joel Ackerman of Thirteen Woodcrest Drive, Nashville, and Joshua Hauser of Nine Clumsy Road, Nashville, to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November ninth, twenty-twenty Planning and Economic Development Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November ninth Human Affairs Committee, except and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November eighteenth, twenty-twenty Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a Budget Review Committee meeting held Monday, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty, regarding proposed resolution twenty-dash-eighty-eight. Alderman Dow.
Yes, we had a, uh, budget meeting last night. We actually had two items on the agenda, both of which passed. R twenty-oh-eighty-six was to allow the Police Department to accept, uh, a hundred and forty thousand dollars' worth of free cell phones and, and, uh, phone service for law enforcement. The other, the R twenty-oh-eighty-eight has to do with the approving the cost items of collective bargaining agreement between the mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of National Hampshire and Local seven-eight-nine International Association of Firefighters from July first, twenty-nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and authorizing a related transfer. That, uh, had a, uh, a lot of debate on it, and, and all of the testimony can be seen in the minutes uh, or on the recording. And the motion carried the, uh, the Budget Committee, five to one, with one abstention due to conflict. So, that was the summation of the Budget Committee meeting last night.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Special Board of Aldermen meeting, also held Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, regarding proposed resolution twenty-dash-ninety-four and ordinance dash twenty-thirty-six. Your girlfriend texted.
Who's that?
Syria. But someone, thank you. So the, there was a special meeting at six PM this evening regarding, um, ordinance twenty-thirty-six, which is establishing a Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees. There was an amendment to that, adding two non-voting members. Two, no, one voting member and one alternate. I'm sorry, from the Board of Aldermen. So that passed earlier this evening. For, it was recommended for final passage. And then we have before us this evening Resolution twenty-ninety-four, which was, is, uh, the omnibus resolution regarding the new market tax credit transaction for the Performing Arts Center. Uh, we went through this with, um, with the, with Neil Cannon, with, um, Mr. Kaminsky, with Director Cummings, the, the attorney, um, Attorney Leonard- the attorney, Attorney Leonard. And it was kind of laying out the funding necessary for the Performing Arts Center. So that passed as well and was recommended to the full board for final passage. That concludes my report. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty eighty, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of forty-four thousand sixteen dollars from the Center of Tech and Civic Life, CTCL, into City Clerk Grant Activity, CTCL, FY twenty election administration.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move for final passage of R twenty eighty by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries Resolution twenty dash eighty is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty eighty-two, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the United States Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, to establish a CARES Act revolving loan fund.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
A motion for final passage of R twenty zero eighty-two by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would Alderman Lou? You're on mute.
Thank you. I thought, excuse me, we had a CARES Act revolving loan fund.
This is not.
We do have one. Yes, this is a Director Cummings.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think what you're, if I may.
Yes.
For the record, Director Tim Cummings of Economic Development, this legislation is because the city was awarded a new EDA grant through the CARES Act for just over eight hundred thousand with approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand being available to be appropriated for COVID-nineteen-related type of assistance. And so this would be separate from what was done previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries Resolution twenty eighty-two is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty eighty-four, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from the Kears Foundation into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, Advancing Public Health in Communities.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R dash twenty dash zero eight four by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the call that couldn't just speak to how this will be used?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat the question?
She wants to know how the thirty thousand dollar grant will be used from the Kresge Foundation.
All the Kresge Foundation funds are going to be used to provide consultation to our leadership on how to improve our effectiveness as a culturally effective organization. The funds were given to address the gaps that we've seen with COVID and the disproportionate impact on minority populations. And so there's work that's been identified across the country as well as in New Hampshire with regards to measures that can be taken to close those gaps, which includes being more culturally competent in some of the ways that we address meeting, the services that we provide, as well as hiring diverse members from the community to work as our community health workers, but more so in having consultants work with our leadership in the greater Nashville area around having culturally effective organizations. So it'll be used to pay for those consultants and to get some educational materials out.
Thank you, Director Bagley. You all set? Alderwoman Lou?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
That motion carries Resolution twenty dash eighty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty eighty-five, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of fifty-eight thousand dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into Police Grant Activity, two thousand twenty-one Violence Against Women Act, BAWA, Grant Program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Move for final passage of R twenty oh eighty-five by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou.
I apologize. It just occurred to me that I could ask this question, but are we able to get an idea of how this is going to be directed? What use we'll make of these funds?
Alderwoman Kelly, did you want to address that? She's not on. Typically, it's used for the programs when, and it might even be partial salaries for people that work on the Violence Against Women Task Force.
I appreciate it. Earlier, I saw Chief Kerrigan on the line and I thought maybe he was here to answer that question, but thank you. I mean, it's money and they applied for a grant, so I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Alderman Lopez.
National PD has a specific training for officers who work specifically with victims of domestic violence. Often, there's specific types of safety training. There's mental health crisis de-escalation training. There's special investigation that needs to take place and then working with the victim, connecting them with you know, resources for emergency housing, safe housing, and then even lifeline contacting. That's a lot of what the Victims Against Domestic Violence Act effort do. And I know that National PD has a very, very close partnership between themselves and Bridges Domestic Violence. And I think this is my very well spent.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez.
And there's Chief.
And I would say ditto to represent. I thought the discussion on the curfew thing was done, but yeah, to answer all your questions, you're all correct. The money is funded partially, I'm sorry, it funds a salary for our victims advocate who handles every, makes contact with every one of our domestic violence victims. It goes to paying half salary for a police officer to help out in the domestic violence unit and it helps with the programming in the relationship, you know, different programming with Bridges.
And we've been getting this grant for a while, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All set, Alderman Lou?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution twenty dash eighty-five. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, sorry.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
That motion carries Resolution twenty dash eighty-five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty eighty-eight, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashville, New Hampshire, and local seven eighty-nine International Association of Firefighters from July first of two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and authorizing a related transfer.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend R twenty zero eight eight by replacing it with the red line and clean copies of the FIRE CBA that were with the resolution when it was introduced at last night's Budget Review Committee in the red line clean copies attached to Deputy Corporation Clark's memo dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty. And if you'd like, Madam President, I can speak to it just briefly.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. Just briefly, the amended version, the Goldenrod copy just includes some language that was inadvertently left out regarding some pay and benefits for members of the fire department who are called away on service for, as being members of the National Guard. So that is the only amendment that is being offered in this Goldenrod copy.
Thank you, Alderman Tenza. The motion is to amend by replacing the red lined and clean copies of the FIRE CBA that were with the resolution when it was introduced last night's meeting, the budget review meeting with the red line copy and clean copies which were attached to Deputy Corporation Council Clark's memo dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Motion is to amend. Discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I astound.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yays and one abstention.
That motion carries. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of the amended Resolution ordinance.
Thank you. The motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty eighty-eight as amended by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Tenza.
All right, Madam President, thank you. And I know that the Budget Committee had a full discussion on this last night. A lot of important things were brought up. I just wanted to point out one thing that I think that I respectfully disagree with the mayor on in this CBA and that has to do with the healthcare and how the firefighters have structured the healthcare changes in this contract. Because what I see in this, in this contract is really a model for what we should be striving for as we are negotiating with collective bargaining units. What the firefighters have said essentially is that they're going to adopt the language that the city's asked them to with regarding high deductible plans regarding the health savings accounts. But rather than just offer it to their members, they have essentially incentivized them to join the plan, saying that if they get a certain high percentage of their members to join this plan, then they'll realize some benefit back to them in terms of a increase in their percent wage increases for the years that they're able to maintain that. So the way I think this helps the city is that with healthcare costs increasing so much, even if we pay a little bit more in wages, we're going to save in the long run by saving, paying for healthcare costs and healthcare premiums for them. It doesn't show up. My understanding is that the healthcare is in a different budget, so it doesn't necessarily show up in the same category, same line item or in the firefighters, the fire department budget. But overall, I believe it's a savings to the city. The other point that I would make, Madam President, and just in this, for this contract, I know that there's been a lot of press about what the tax increase is going to be. We have not set a budget for the next fiscal year. That'll be done in the spring. In my short time on the board, I feel like we always are getting warnings about how bad the budget increases are going to be, but somehow, again, Alderman Dow and the mayor, Madam President, people come together, we're able to put forth a responsible budget which, you know, is able to maintain services for folks throughout the city and meet all of our needs. The firefighters in their last contract, there were years where they took a zero percent increase, cost of living increase in order to make the numbers work and in order to do what they thought was the right thing for the city. You know, that was in one of the best economic, best economies that our state and country has seen. So I don't think it's unreasonable for them to be asking for the percentages of increases that they're asking for now in the overall fire department budget. I believe it's sustainable. I don't believe that this is something across the board that is going to, that other unions are necessarily going to demand from us, nor, you know, given the different departments, could be sustained in those different departments. But given the work that's been put into this, given the history of the firefighter's contracts, I'd ask that we support this tonight and pass it on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I also just wanted to comment on that, that each union presenting is a negotiation process and while we had We had some very serious discussions last year about. You know, our, our obligations to. Draw the line somewhere when it came to certain types of, uh, benefits that were, um, being appropriated to unions, um, as part of the negotiating process. We also do need to take every, every, um. Contract as an individual case, um, unless we want to see some kind of super union emerge. I think it's important for us to look at the department and what its specific needs are, and I think the firefighters have taken a very conscientious step forward. Given the role that they play and the importance that healthcare particularly for them plays. It live, being in a, a position which is extremely hazardous. Um, and, and ever-expanding one, uh, as well, I mean, they don't just have to worry about, uh, healthcare. For injuries or things, uh, related to putting out fires, but now they're doing emergency calls, they're transporting people out of difficult locations. There, all of our first responders, uh, services have evolved significantly, I have some of the older. Uh, city budgets, uh, I collect them at the antique store, and, uh, there was a time when the Fire Department was worth like, uh, twelve hundred dollars. And the mayor was like seventy-five, um, I think those days are a little bit gone, and I do think that we need to. Look at the emerging needs, and I, I agree with the mayor that we need to look at. Flexibility and making sure that our impact on taxpayers, uh, is. Is efficient, but I also think that the Fire Department offers a tremendous service for what we pay. An extremely important service if we want to continue growing our, our tax. Base, based on properties, uh, and also. A, a very important, uh, role in leadership in our community as well, so I think, uh, we asked them to go back and, and, and reevaluate that what their needs were. They did it, they put the work in, um, and I plan to support this.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez, anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I made extensive comments last night, I'm not going to repeat them, uh, for the sake of brevity, but, uh. I just want to go on the record as I will be supporting this contract.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, I also spoke at length at last night's meeting, and I'll try. I'll try to follow Alderman Dowd's example by being, uh, brief, but. I, I'm not going to support this, um, during the. The discussion last night, there was a. You know, there was a, a, a big conflict between what the. You know, the numbers that the union president gave us about what the. How much this would increase the, uh, the budget, what the percentages were. Between that and what the mayor and. CFO Griffin were saying, so I, I. I sent CFO Griffin the, uh, the information that President Houli had provided us. And, uh, and asked him to. You know, to verify, try to. You know, I, I've always thought of, uh. CFO Griffin as being a pretty straight shooter. And so. Uh, he looked at, uh, President Houli's numbers. In which I, I know President Houli said last night was, uh, you know, came from. Ms. Evans, uh, of the Financial Office. So I, I asked CFO Griffin, you know, to verify these numbers, you know, what, what are the real numbers? So what he says. Uh, is that. That, uh, that this agreement. You know, represents. Over the four years, i- an increase of sixteen point five percent. The proposal that we rejected in June passed for seventeen point six percent. Uh, four million dollars over the four years. This, this one, according to CFO Griffin. Is three point seven million dollar increase over the four years. You know, that represents. A, um, an increase, an average increase of four point one two five percent per year. And about almost a million dollars a year. You know, so I, I, I don't pretend to be, uh. You know, a financial expert, but, uh, I'll, I have to listen to what CFO Griffin is, is telling us. And I, I find this to be. This proposal to be not all that much different than the one that we rejected in June. And, uh, you know, it strikes me as being, um. Too expensive now, you know, some of my fellow Aldermen have pointed out correctly, I think. That, uh, our Fire Department, our firefighters, uh, provide a great service to the city. They do a tremendous job. You know, they are among the best, um, if not the best. In the state and, uh, you know, as Alderman Clemmons pointed out, he thinks, um, in the country. I don't disagree with, with any of that. But the question that. You know, I remember, uh, you know, back in June when, when this was presented to us, the question, the fireman was saying that. That they weren't being paid appropriately. You know, so the. You know, the question is, you know, are, are, you know, if they're not being paid appropriately, then whatever it costs, we ought to pay it and, and bring them up to. To an appropriate amount, but. You know, I want, I, I say this to the firemen, and I say this to their supporters and, and. You know, some of my constituents who have called me about this. From what I can tell, and I haven't, you know, no one has really. Told me that I'm wrong about this, from what I can tell, our firefighters are being paid. Uh, appropriately, they're being paid as well as if not more. Than similar departments across the state, even in Massachusetts. You know, I just want, you know, people to know, I mean, I don't know what it, what an appropriate amount is to pay firefighters, but. The only way I can determine that is to look at what other fire departments are paying, what other cities are paying. And, and, um, you know, are we paying? You know, less, uh, are we being unfair to our firefighters, and my research says, no, we're not, we're not paying less, in fact, we're paying more. You know, just so people know, our firefighters. You know, start at, uh, around fifty thousand. You know, a fire, a, a, a brand-new firefighter, you know, high school graduate, no training, starts at around fifty thousand. And that doesn't count any overtime that he might earn on top of, uh, his regular salary. In that. You know, that's, that's the first year. You know, as, as they go on, they, 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 you know, they get up towards, uh, an over seventy thousand a year. You know, captains. Are getting paid in the ninety thousand dollar range, uh, and with this new proposal, they're going to get paid. You know, up to a hundred and ten thousand. So I. I don't think, um. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be responsible to the firefighters and to the taxpayers. I don't think what we are paying is inappropriate. So. You know, for, and, um. You know, we're asking all of our employees and, and other employees and other unions are cooperating. Uh, with this transfer to this high deductible insurance plan, so we can afford providing. Appropriate healthcare to all of our employees, and, um. You know, when the mayor says, you know, we shouldn't. Uh, make exceptions with, if we do make exceptions, then, you know, where, how can we? How can we arrive at this new healthcare plan if? You know, if we allow some. Some employees to, uh, to keep their, their old plans, their old HMOs, their old point-of-service plans. And, uh, and then try to get others to, to move to this, this other plan, so. So for those reasons, I can't support this.
Alderman, Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, um, I just wanted to, um. To, I, I've always, from the beginning, I've always hated comparing one department to another, department of police to fire. Portsmouth to Manchester, Manchester, Nashville, I, I've always been very much against that, um, and. But I, you know, I'd like to make some clarifications, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure that. Our, um, our, all of our, our firefighters that are hired, um, must be certified from the, um, Fire Academy. And I think that's, um, kind of a, a state law in New Hampshire, so. That's one of the differences also between, um, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Massachusetts pays them to, um, get licenses and so on, so. I think, I think it was brought up at last night's meeting, um, and, and I know, um, Alderman. Had asked that we, 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 we point out what all the differences are, and, and I don't think we would have time to do that, but. I, I don't think that it's, um, it, it's fair without actually having every single contract in front of us and looking line by line. And, and I'm not going to argue what is a good pay and what is not a good pay, um, I think this is, um. A good contract that they've worked very hard for, and, and I think that we should, um, um, move it forward and, and pass it, so thank you so much.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
Um, I just want to, thank you, uh, Madam President, I just want to point out, um. There has to be, y- y- you know, I, I'm hearing that it's not a good idea to compare to. Different places, and it's not a good idea to compare to d- different, uh, functions. But I think when we evaluate a contract, it's natural. To make, to try to get an idea of the market. I mean, that's a natural, and, and I don't understand how, um. I don't personally understand how to do it any other way, from my background in business, other than looking at markets, looking at, comparing it to something else. And I think possibly, um. We need to try to come up with a format of reporting that will help us make these decisions better. So it sounds as though we're saying there's too many, you know, you can't compare oranges to oranges or apples. Or, or just to apples, rather, but just going forward, and I, I, not to, um, minimize. The work that our CFO does to, uh, provide us back, you know, to provide us with, um, some. Uh, documentation to help us make the decisions, but I think that going forward, we need to have some way to, um, make. To interpret the differences, because I, I do think that for me, the only way I can, uh, evaluate a contract. Is by somehow getting a sense of, um. How it compares to others in a market, you know, that's how you pay people. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, uh. Madam President, John Griffin, CFO, could I just clarify some things?
Mr. Griffin.
We appreciate that very much, thank you. So Alderman Jettie, as he indicated last night, he sent me the, um, work that was done by. The union, and that, that information is actually correct. The issue that I want to bring to your attention is that that's the contract without the financial and the, the medical incentive. I'm not sure, uh, if you, uh, if the board was aware of that, but. By adding the medical incentive, you can kind of picture the costing, it adds a half a percent in year three. Same half a percent in year four, so it's a one percent increase in total, but it compounds. Furthermore, that's. Other sal- it affects other salary costs, and it affects pension. Doesn't affect medical, but what's in that, that, um, information that's in your costing sheets that has the medical incentive. It creates a difference between the savings that I witnessed today. From the union of four hundred and twenty thousand, let's round it off. Down to two hundred and fifty thousand, so the delta that Mayor Dodgers is speaking of is about a hundred and seventy thousand. So I just wanted to make sure that you actually had those costings in your packets. And that the union, maybe at the time, was trying to compare the prior TA. To the current TA without medical incentive, the medical incentive actually costs more. Therefore, the costing, as Alderman Jettie mentioned, was roughly three point seven million in total. Versus the prior submittal of four point oh two million, so I just wanted to, I, I hope that helps, uh, I just wanted to clear that. Information to the best of my ability, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anyone else? Seeing, seeing no one, the motion is for final passage. As amended. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Um, I'm gonna have to abstain.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and two nays and one abstention.
And that motion carries and Resolution twenty eighty-eight is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty ninety, authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at fifty-five Franklin Street, map sixty-eight, lot fifty-three.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I move for final passage of R twenty oh ninety by rule call.
Motion is for final passage of R twenty ninety by rule call, discussion on that motion, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I have a question on this, um, and my question relates to the fact that. Uh, and, and I, I can probably guess what the answer is, but, um, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. Because I know that this. Was discussed and came up prior to us finding out that we were in a six million dollar hole from the state of New Hampshire. So my understanding of this is that. The way that it's financed. Is through the, uh, a, a number of payments over the years through the, um, school budget. So. I imagine that the payments. I, I, I'm just wondering, is this, is this something that the. School department is still confident that they can, uh, pay for through their budget, considering the six million dollar shortfall? Or should we hold off on this, or, or that's, that's my question essentially.
Looks like Alderman Dowd would like to respond.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
I thought that Mr. Donovan was going to be on tonight, but, uh, they, they do have the, the, the funding worked out. One of the uses of the school is, one of the floors is going to be for the alternative school. That we are currently having to pay a hundred and seventy thousand dollar lease on every year. That will be used for the initial payments plus, uh, some other funds they've set aside for this building. So. And, and the other will be for the kindergarten children, uh, on a different floor, and they will be separated, and there will be no interaction between the two. Because our, uh, when we took, took kindergarten into the elementary schools. The schools were already full as far as classrooms, now it's a strain. And, uh, so this will, will put all of the expertise on teaching the youngsters in one school. Uh, and, and free up some of the space in the other elementary schools. So, um, we also, we are also able, we, I, not me. That's my, that was a former life when I was on the Board of Ed, but I am the liaison to the Board of Ed. And we were able to get the majority, if not all, of the furniture for that school for nothing. It was donated to us by a company that went up in Mermac. In fact, we had so much material that some of it would get donated to the children's home. In fact, we had so much material that some of it would get donated to the Children's Home as well. So the expenses for the building have all been worked out by Mr. Donovan. I have full confidence in his ability to do that. And it's, it's exceedingly important to acquire this building so that after its payment, there'll be actually a positive impact on the Board of Education budget, because the lease payments will be gone. So any other questions I could possibly answer, but?
First, I have Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I just want to say ditto to the Budget Chair, but that location that they were, we were renting off Amherst Street for the students, the older students, it would be a great relief not to have to lease that building, literally. So in my opinion, it's a saving to the city. It's not that we're actually spending more, because it's going to be a saving to the city, because we're taking two different groups and putting into that building that's already there and in fairly decent condition.
Y'all said Alderman Gathright?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Sorry, I'm faster than my computer is. So I just wanted to add on to what Alderman Dowd had said. The building site is better laid out based on the presentation that was given to us, where you can kind of control access on the part of older students to floors with younger students on it. But it does allow for supervised job training, basically, for childcare support. And I've seen that effectively applied at programs like the Adult Learning Center. You know, it provides really good opportunities for, for teaching positive skillsets. And then additionally, I think it was also mentioned that the transportation of students with special needs, due to its consolidated nature, would also be a savings, because we're not going to have to spread that out over quite as many different school sites. And there were potentially some staffing savings as well. So I think this is a better deal and a more efficient use of spaces. And I'm looking forward to see it unfold. I know that Brentwood difficulty has been one we've been kind of struggling with for years. So it's, it's good to see a plan kind of coming together like this.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. There were a couple of other things. There was so much went into making this. There is a nice chunk of federal funds that is going to be used for this. It was already a school, so it's in many ways prepared for us already. And school employees, because they are not in the schools at present, will be able to do most of the work that will have to be done to make this more appropriate for, for the younger kids especially. So it, it's like the perfect storm at this point. We need the space. The building is there. It's a very good deal from, from a purchase point, and they've brought all the pieces together to make it work. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to echo what my colleagues have said before me. It, it was well thought out. When they, when they talked about the funding of it and where they would be taking money from here for the savings and so on, it was well drafted. I think it was a plan, and for as long as I can remember, at least since I've been a, an Alderman, there's been discussion about Brentwood. The lease was coming up. There were issues with it, having to bus students and so on. And I think there were even some parental concerns about, about the whole school. I, and, and I want to echo what Alderman Lopez had said. That was one of the concerns and brought up at the meeting about the separation of the students from different age groups. And they, they had, they were ready to give us an answer. They had it well planned. So I, again, with others that I've said, I think we need to move forward on this and, and vote to approve it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. And, you know, obviously with the budget meeting, when this came up, I had no, no issues with it. I do think it is a well thought out plan. My only concern was the fact that it is going to take up a substantial portion, portion of the budget of the school department. But I understand that in the long run, this probably would be less expensive. I just am hopeful. I, I guess I'm, I'm, my only concern is that the is just the future of our, of our education here in Nashville in general, because of that, that major deficit that we're facing. So, but I, I will support this after hearing from my colleagues. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one. The motion is for final passage of Resolution 2090 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-90 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2093, approving the guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Performing Arts Center.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you. I move for final passage of R 20093 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2093. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2093 is declared duly adopted.
Third reading of Resolution R 2094, Omnibus Resolution Regarding New Markets Tax Credit Transaction for the Performing Arts Center.
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R dash 20 dash 093 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion.
Just wanted to point out that he said 093, it's 094.
Oh, good catch, Alderman Cleaver.
Already approved 093.
Discussion?
I, I stand corrected. Yeah, little typo on the script. Thank you.
Discussion. Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So when I, when I hear Alderman T. Boom say that that he's going to eat his hat, if, if anyone really understands this whole new market tax credit transaction, you know, you know, I think to myself, if, if the fireman's contract was difficult to, to figure out, you know, that's, that's simple compared to this. But the truth is, you know, even though I was, even though I voted against the Performing Arts Center, this is a way for the city to get approximately $2.5 million through the, this federal new market tax credit program. And it's a way to come up with the 4 million that is a requirement in order to go ahead with this project. And even though I voted against the project, you know, it passed overwhelmingly. And you know, so I'm going, I'm going to support this because I'm sure I couldn't explain all of the details of it. I have a, a general understanding of it. And I know that that as complicated as it is, you know, it's, it's, it's the way that you know, that we're going to get the $2.5 million necessary to, you know, $2.5 million that, that, that the city's not going to have to pay for in order to go ahead with this project. And this project is going ahead, even though I was against it, it's going ahead. And so this is a way of getting $2.5 million in, in, or, you know, rather than the city having to come up with that money. And, you know, I, I wish that we had had more time to to go through all of the details, but you know, in order to get it, we've got to meet this December 15th deadline. And I, I know that Director Cummings has been working, you know, very hard to bring this all together. It's a very complicated process. It takes time. And, and the deadlines were not imposed by him. They were imposed upon him. And so in an ideal world, we would have a lot of time, you know, to, to explore all of the details, but we don't. And so to, to say, to, to vote against this, because I'm not familiar with every little detail of it, would be costing the city about $2.5 million, which I don't want to do. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-94 declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Reading of Ordinance O 2034, extending temporary adjustments to site plans to allow for greater outdoor seating at restaurants.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Ordinance 20-034 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on this motion. Alderwoman Lou.
Just a question. Is this the same ordinance that we spoke with Director Marchand about last week regarding this is specifically private, private property?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 2034. Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Schmidt, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Ordinance 20-34 is declared duly adopted.
Third reading of amended ordinance O 2036, establishing Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion for final passage of O 20-036 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage as amended? Alderman O'Brien?
As amended, yes.
As amended. Discussion on that motion.
Ah, yes, as amended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, the full board hasn't amended it yet.
Yeah, it was the last meeting.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to amend by creating a voting member who, a voting liaison from the Board of Aldermen appointed by the President and an alternate, as was discussed at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. The motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Dowd.
Just a point for clarification. We had a meeting of the full board at the special board meeting, and we amended it at that meeting. It's the same group.
Doesn't matter. This is the full board.
Further discussion to amend. Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of O dash 20 dash O 36 as amended by roll call.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? Because I know we had the discussion earlier, but the discussion also was whether there were voting rights and those types of things. So I'm just trying to figure out now what I'm voting on, what we've been voting on.
Okay. Alderman Clemmons made a motion to amend by adding a voting member from the Board of Aldermen and an alternate.
Then I'm good. Thank you.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. I, I would just like to state my support of Alderman Gathright's comments about, this is about the makeup of the board. This is an opportunity for us to uh, oh. And I hope that, I understand that, I, I think that the mayor will, will appoint and, and ask for, ask for us to approve the board. Is that how this will be done? I know. I always ask a question while I'm making a statement, but my statement is that I, I hope that we consider that this is an opportunity to be inclusive in a board that involves a really important institution in our downtown, in the very heart of our community. And a question, is this the board something that is appointed by the mayor and then approved by the Board of Aldermen?
That's correct. However, the member from the Board of Aldermen is appointed by the President of the Board of Aldermen and the alternate, like we do on other committee assignments and liaison assignments.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, just to echo the statements of Alderman Gathright and Alderman Lou, it is a huge opportunity if we're trying to build a performing arts venue, which is attractive and financially. Self-sustaining, then there is some opportunity for the Board of Trustees to be representative of the community and have access to. Trends, patterns, cultural enthusiasm and passion that will drive the project. All that being said, we are renting it out to a third-party vendor to manage it, so. All things are imperfect, but when we look at appointees, I hope the mayor will look at a, his typical array of diverse and qualified dedicated Nashwans.
Okay, Alderman Tenza.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd actually like to make a further amendment to, to the ordinance, just a brief, hopefully non-controversial amendment. So my, my, my thoughts on this are that the, the Board of Trustees are going to propagate rules and regulations as to how the performing arts center is going to be, be managed essentially from a. Not on a day-to-day level, but for, for the city. Paragraph D of the ordinance states that the Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees shall make and execute all such rules. In regulations for its government, the preservation of property under its charge and the use of management thereof, as it may from time to time deemed necessary or expedient. I would make a motion that we include an additional sentence to paragraph D. That the, to the Board of Trustees shall also require that youth programming be provided for. Through the, the management company or some youth management programming, I should say, be provided for. And the reason I, I do this, I had a conversation with Director Cummings earlier today. He explained to me kind of what provisions are already in place for the new market tax credits to, to provide tickets to, to, to. Under-served populations, youth populations here in Nashua, and I think that's great, and I'm sure that they'll, they'll do that under the. Under the guidelines for the new market tax credits. One of the things I heard tonight, though, was that, you know, after seven years, Moscoma. Will probably not be in, involved in, I don't think that, you know, and therefore that requirement may go away. But also, you know, as I look at some of the. Facilities that spectacle management books, you know, if, if we're getting a lot of acts like, you know, music acts that are at, at night. That may cater more to an older population. I don't think that that will necessarily benefit the, the youth in Nashua. I do think that there's a public benefit to, to this building since the taxpayers are paying for it. And so I would like to offer that amendment to this ordinance for the board's consideration.
Okay, I'd like to call on Director Cummings.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. I just asked that. Alderman Tenza make it very clear what the verbiage is in terms of inserting the, the one sentence he's looking for and, and exactly where he would like it. So we're understanding what the amendment is. With that being said, I don't foresee any issues with, with what he's, with, with what he's, are requesting. It wouldn't cause any problems.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask if. The Alderman could repeat the, the sentence again. I just wanted to write it down and.
Alderman Tenza.
So it would be at the end of paragraph D. And again, it would say that the Board of Trustees shall require that some youth programming be provided for. That's it. I certainly am not intending to micromanage the, the management company. I understand that they're a for-profit business, but. You know, I think there should be some, some provision, and I understand that there may already be, be people who are working on this. This just codifies and clarifies for everyone in the future that this is important to us.
Thank you, Alderman Tenza. I, being on the steering committee, I know that this has been discussed. You know, by the committee, but not put down, you know, in the, the ordinance, so. Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I just had a further question to the maker of the motion, if you might further amend. To say instead that shall require the opportunity to provide some youth programming. And the reason that I say that is because, you know, the, the intention, I do think that there should be. Youth programming in there. I absolutely agree with that. And I, I guess that. The idea there is that. You know, if, if a scheduling conflict was, was somehow to come up and, and not. Work out at least towards the opportunity. In other words, we're, we're going to try with our professional schedule to get that. In there. I don't know if the maker of the motion would, would want that added in, but.
Alderman Tenza.
I mean, so, so I would, I appreciate Alderman Clemmons' suggestion. I mean, I think it's, I think it's important to, to make sure that, again, some, some youth programming happens, so at this point, I mean, if the, the rest of the board believes that. It's, you know. That, that language is more appropriate, then I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you think it'd be appropriate to put this off and really study how we should add this in rather than to do this on the seat of our pants right now?
I know Director Cummings did say earlier that this was not as important to pass tonight as the, the other ordinance that we had before us. That's a possibility. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, thank you. President Wilshire. I have a question, I think, for Director Cummings, if that's okay, Madam President.
You bet.
Thank you. Director Cummings, the. The MOU or the, I should say, the management agreement, the operator and management agreement, would that not? Kind of be the place where this would be outlined and, and stated or? And not that we shouldn't put it in here, but I'm just, I'm just asking you. I know that you've been working on that and so on. But when we, we've talked in the past about having nonprofit or local. Use of that space and putting that into the contract and so on. Are we not building that into it? Is, I guess what I'm asking.
Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you. You, you are correct. In the operating agreement is where I would recommend you, you be explicit in terms of your detail. However, adding such verbiage as being suggested would not run afoul. And, and we would, you know, obviously make, make sure that it is part of the conversation moving forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. You're on mute, Alderman Gathright.
Okay, so like I mentioned others that there's a lot more to that and, and, and thank you. Alderman Tenza for. The piece about the youth, because earlier when I talked, I didn't talk about the youth, but I would like to make sure that there's inclusion across the board. As far as a trustee organization or director organization or whatever it may be, there needs to be inclusion representing the city of Nashua. So thank you for that. That's it.
Further, Director Cummings, did you have something else to add?
If, if I may, what I was going to suggest is you vote, vote the legislation this evening and then we could. Introduce new legislation to speak to the various parts to amend the, the legislation that's before you to address these, these issues. But it does show forward progress for us, because I believe we all are conceptually in the same place.
Yeah. Okay. The motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsir.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Tenza.
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I meant to call on Alderman O'Brien. Sorry about that. Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of all dash twenty dash zero three six as amended by roll call.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Mulsir.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries ordinance twenty thirty-six is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution R twenty ninety-five authorizing the expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund on consulting services with the National, Nashua Regional Planning Commission.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lou, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Jettie. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty ninety-six authorizing a reduction of a three hundred and thirty-dollar variance application fee to widen driveway at sixteen Hardaway Road to fifty dollars.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty ninety-seven approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Public Library Board of Trustees and Nashville Public Library Employees AFT FPE Local four eight three one. From July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and authorizing a related transfer.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Dow. Alderman Tenza, Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Lopez, please. If that necessary. Alderman Gathright, Alderman.
Frequency.
Geez. Alderman Cleaver, I got you. And myself. Given its first reading, I will sign that to the Budget Review Committee. Oh, without objection, I will allow for a suspension of the rules for the first readings of resolution twenty ninety-eight and resolution twenty ninety-nine that were received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of resolution R twenty ninety-eight approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashville, New Hampshire and UAW Local two three two two Clerical and Technical Unit. From July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez, I gotcha. Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cle. Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty ninety-nine approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashville, New Hampshire and UAW Local two three two two Professional Unit. From July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman O'Brien. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance oh twenty thirty-seven establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Robinson Road.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance oh twenty thirty-eight establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Charlotte Avenue.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lou, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the. Alderman Lopez, did I miss you? Alderman Lopez, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance oh twenty thirty-nine updating the financial standards for the city's welfare guidelines.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt. Alderwoman Lou. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment.
Madam President.
Mr. T. Boom.
Thank you. I have two grandsons in college. One is a freshman, one was senior. In this Thanksgiving, I'm going to ask them if they can understand the meaning of the word of the term credit default swaps. Now, credit default swaps. Dealt with the economic meltdown in two thousand and eight. And behind me, you see some books. The general subject, and I can tell you. This document by Moscona Bank. Dealing with new market tax credits. Is any bit as complicated, if not more complicated, than credit default swaps. So finally, I gave up, I studied this thing. I did study, however, the diagram. It was presented in the earlier meeting before this meeting. This might make a couple of brief comments. First of all, in the top, it says bond purchaser to the City of Nashua. It mentions twenty. Million two hundred forty thousand eight hundred dollars. I thought the city had bonded twenty-one million dollars. Now maybe. Director Cummings can address that. But then we look at the blocks of City of Nashua, that money gets divided into two parts. There's a seven million dollar. Plus. Sent to a senior leverage lender. And there's a thirteen point one million dollars sent to. A Julalip owner, whatever the hell those are. But if you add up seven million and thirty million. That's twenty million, not twenty-one million. However. This thirteen million suddenly becomes thirteen point eight million in the diagram. this thirteen million suddenly becomes thirteen point eight million in the diagram. Now, if you add thirteen point eight million to seven million, two mil, it's twenty-one million. So there's definitely an error. Somehow, there's a leaky bucket between thirteen point one million and thirteen point eight million in the diagram, the left-hand side. Director Cummings, it's not explained. The other part I want to mention is the equity investor invests two point nine million dollars. And that finally trickles down through shares of fees to two point four four million. Because we all recognize within new market tax credits, they go towards the construction. So what's the difference? The difference there between two point eight nine million from the investment, two point four four million trickles down, there's a bunch of fees. And if you look at this document, page four, you find all kinds of fees called up. I won't go into it. It pretty much adds up to about half a million dollars. So these new market tax credits, a lot of people get their hands out. Half a million adds to about sixteen percent of the cost. So this ain't no freebie, folks. There's a lot of financial handout and manipulation to generate these new market tax credits. So hopefully, my grandsons, this Thanksgiving will explain to me, perhaps also Mr. Cummings, what exactly are credit default swaps? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment?
Stephanie Wolf Frozen Blum.
Please, please do. You're on mute.
On mute.
Now, you're good now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry. My name is Dr. Stephanie Wolf Frozen Blum. I reside at forty-seven Berkeley Street in Nashua, and I'm a member of the Board of Health. Um, earlier today, earlier in this meeting, early today, we had a meeting of the Board of Health, which has been referenced. And earlier in this meeting, the mayor made some references and several aldermen who are dedicated enough to attend the Board of Health meeting also attended. During that meeting, we discussed many different facets of COVID in general and of a potential for a curfew in particular. And we did not come to consensus during that meeting, but there was robust discussion. And it was an excellent process whereby we were able to hear from business leaders and concerned citizens. We heard statistics and we heard stories, some of them heartbreaking. There were three indisputable facts that deserve attention. One is, we are in crisis. We are in crisis because the current rate of increase, the current rate of infection in New Hampshire, in our community, in New England, and in the United States is much higher than it was during the initial aspects of COVID. There is better understanding. There are some treatments. There is hope for a vaccine. But none of that will save us or flatten the curve in the immediate, especially during this holiday season. Another indisputable fact is that we were, to the credit of the mayor and this Board of Aldermen, ahead of the curve when Nashua took the bold step of requiring masks for adults and recommending them for children. But it is also now indisputable that we, not just Nashua, but we are behind the curve. I think it is imperative that something be done. I don't know that that's a curfew, and I am prepared to discuss with anyone or in any context what the pros and cons of that are. But based on the discussions today, it is clear that people are not adhering to the mask mandate. It is clear that businesses, for many reasons, I'm sure that it is very difficult to turn away patrons of to ask frontline people to argue with them about what the law is. But we are not using these important and proven means of reducing transmission. I don't know what the mechanism is. I know the next Board of Aldermen's meeting is not until two weeks from now. But I feel compelled as a medical professional, as a member of the Board of Health, as a senior citizen, as a grandmother, and the daughter of a frail elderly individual to ask, to implore that something be done, whether it is appointing a group that can make recommendations and decisions that will not just include Board of Health, because the Board of Health can make recommendations, whether it is meeting again more expeditiously, whether it is putting the COVID response as a permanent agenda item so that we would not be in a position which I believe, if I understand things correctly, we are in tonight, where we are not able to affect any changes or recommendations in time for drinks giving in time for Thanksgiving. And now we have other holidays coming up, Christmas and New Year's. And I think that we have very little time to prevent what could be a disastrous occurrence for our businesses, for our frontline people, including service workers, and not just in the restaurants, but also in stores and in groceries, delivery. And looking at something that would happen like what's happening in Europe, which is a complete lockdown of everything and a complete shutdown of all shopping and except essentials. So I thank you for hearing me. And I wish everybody a safe and healthy Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf Frozen Blum.
Um, Madam President, may I mention something and?
Yes, Mayor.
The doctor is correct. I think we should take up the, there was a lot of discussion, pros and cons, different, you know, different directions. I, you know, clearly, we have hit a positivity rate that's higher than we have before, seven percent. At the beginning, it was twelve, but there are very few tests being done. Uh, but over the summer, it was more like one, one point two. Now it's nearly seven. We should take up with the Board of Health and the same group of people, hopefully, or a similar group as soon as we possibly can. There were four or five aldermen involved. You know, if we could, I would ask Bobby to try to put that together for Friday morning or Monday morning or something, you know, as soon as we possibly can, because I think Dr. Wolf Frozen Boom is right that we've got to consider taking additional steps. I mean, the thing that worries me the most, just hearing all the discussion is the, you know, not the pick on anyone, but the bars, you know, the, a lot of people mingling as we've at least anecdotally heard, you know, what's happening. A lot of people mingling without masks. They can't, how can they wear a mask when they're drinking, you know, when you're drinking a drink, right? And crowded conditions. Um, the store situation is something we'd like, you know, correct, but it's more, to me, more low risk. Okay, there's someone behind a cash register with a mask. Someone in front of them should be wearing a mask, and that store should be enforcing that mandate, but the bar situation is a a higher risk. And I know a little more about this, you know, I would, because I've talked to Brandon once or twice about uh, you know, Alderman Laws about, you know, what's he seeing, people coming in from out of state. So uh, I don't know how soon we could put this together, but I think it should be either Friday, maybe not, because it's right in the middle of the weekend or the four days. If not on Monday, and try to take up the discussion again. And any members of the board that want to join that, that would be great, because we do need to come to some kind of decision as to what we're going to do and, you know, if we're going to do anything, and if so, what that's going to be.
Okay.
I'll put to Bobby tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Beth Scare.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say thank you to my alderman, Alderman Karen, for her last few votes against PAC funding. I really appreciate it for everyone in the ward, in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to give public comment this evening? Saying none? Remarks by members of board? Alderman Lopez.
Um, I just want to say that, um, given the the situation that we're facing with COVID nineteen, seems a little bit awkward to say, everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but I do. Thanksgiving is centered on the experience of the Mayflower pilgrims. Um, and something that sort of gets glossed over a lot is the hundred and two Mayflower pilgrims pilgrims uh, that spent their winter on the Mayflower, trapped in like ice, not able to set up their settlement. Uh, of that, only fifty-one of them survived. They, that was the ultimate lockdown. And there's a lot of disease, a lot of discomfort. And they came out of that grateful. They came out of that and they built their settlement, um, and they, they made their colony out of it. And I think whatever comes ahead, um, we have something to be grateful for, and that's each other. We have our family, we have our friends, we have our strengths, and it's very easy to lose sight of that. So if you're feeling isolated this holiday season, then reach out. We have mental health supports. We have charitable organizations that are providing everything from jackets to blankets to food, to gift bags. We have to, we have to work through this. We have to admit that there are challenges in front of us. And as was said this morning, we have to admit to ourselves that we're falling short in some areas. Um, when we take shortcuts, other people take shortcuts, and collectively, we have all been exhausted by this long ordeal. But it's not time to drop our guard, and it's not time to start saying, well, the vaccine will come in a couple of weeks or, or, you know, defer to that illusion because it's not real yet. And right now, the decisions that you're making about how you spend your Thanksgiving and how you celebrate your family Thanksgiving will have a direct impact on how you celebrate your Christmas with your family. If there's an outbreak or if there's contagion, you don't want to be spending, you want to have a relative spending Christmas in the hospital or worse. This is something we do need to be very careful with. Um, but we have every reason to be grateful, because we've come this far this year. We've had huge groups of volunteers creating masks, sewing them. We've had Make-It Labs creating face shields. Now Make-It Labs is reprogramming computers that were donated so that kids can do online learning more easily. There's just been a tremendous amount of positive effort in trying to overcome this. And I think we need to focus on that rather than wanting to put things back to the way they were, making decisions for the short term. Um, and I just encourage everybody to do that. We have plenty of reasons to be grateful. Um, we also have plenty of lessons to learn from the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to start by saying happy Thanksgiving as well. And, um, um, and I agree with exactly what Alderman Lopez said. We do have a lot to be grateful. The fact that we are here and that we are able to meet this way, we are able to do as much as, as much business as, as possible because of the technology that we have. Um, I find it amazing. No one likes being in their home. Um, I can't wait to get into the horseshoe and be with all of you and see all of you. I, I can't wait to, to hug my family that I haven't seen in a year. But the, the bottom line is that, um, I, I think that, that we can be the change here and we can make things happen. People such as Alderman Laws, you know, spoke about what he has to deal with, with people that are coming in from Massachusetts. And these people aren't going to be hearing this, this message that we're, that we're plea, that we're doing to our Nashville folks here. Our, our, our people such as in bars and restaurants, they put up sometimes with a lot of abuse. And, um, I, I can tell you, today alone, I got five different email messages from members here in Ward Three that have experienced things in stores where one worker had nose and mouth um, outside of their mask and, and it was around the chin. And when they made a comment off to the side, um, she said, could you put your mask up? And he says, I'm wearing it. Um, so I had to send her exactly what the ordinance said, you know, um, it's not just wearing it, it's covering your nose and your mouth and so on. I, I think being belligerent like that helps no one. Um, I, I think it does a disservice to those people that are trying to stay healthy, keep family healthy. Um, I, I want to do everything I can to protect people such as Alderman Laws, Dr. Stephanie Wolf Frozen Blum. Um, you know, Director Cummings, um, all of us here, these, these are, we have to do it for each other. We have to do it for ourselves. And if we don't start now, today, this very moment, um, you know what? A year from now, we're going to be sitting here on a Zoom call. And personally, I don't want to spend my next birthday on a Zoom call. I've already rescheduled it once. That's going to be enough. So thank you very much, and please everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alderman Cle. Uh, Alderman Harriet Gathright. You're on mute, Linda.
I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to my colleagues and all the officials that are on this call, as well as to the City of Nashville, not just my district, but, but to the city. And I like to echo what my colleagues spoke of in terms of taking care of ourselves. I, for one, most of you know I have a pretty large family here. And, um, you know, I have twelve grandkids here and four of five children here. And we're actually doing separate housing Thanksgiving for the first time in life, literally. Because literally, my house was the house for Thanksgiving dinner for all of my family, and it's usually about twenty of us or more in the house with pictures and everything else. And so that's a different transition for, for me and for their dad and for, um, the grandchildren in particular, like my granddaughter's coming home from, from school in, uh, New York. And, you know, what have you, and going to be here for a while. And she's like, well, man, we come to your house. And I'm like, no, you gotta have it with your dad and your mom, you know? So it's been a difficult time for everybody, just trying to be safe and, and, and make sure that we're all okay at the end of this day. Because we still have a long days to go ahead of us. So I just want to say, um, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Make sure you take care of yourselves personally. And then family next. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Laws.
Uh, my connection keeps dropping, so someone just leave to me if I start dropping upon you. Uh, I just want to make a few comments, uh, response. First off, happy birthday, Fresh. Uh, I appreciate the, the concern about the abuse that we take, but that, that honestly part of the job and we're used to it. But second of all, I can handle the abuse. I can't handle the guilt that I'm going to feel if I find out that the bar I work at, or not even the bar I work at, if any bar that I could have affected, uh, ended up being the spot where there was a community transmission and someone ultimately died there or died as a result of it. And like, that's, that's kind of why I'm championing this cause for the last couple of weeks. And I, I'm sure all of you agree with me that nobody wants to feel that way. Uh, it's really as close to the holidays, especially after what a crappy year this has been for every single one of us. You know, uh, that being said, I'm, I'm a little dismayed right now, because the feeling I'm coming away from is that nothing's going to happen. And, I mean, it might happen a couple of days from now, but a couple of days from now, we'll And, I mean, it might happen a couple of days from now, but a couple of days from now will be a couple of days after the second busiest drinking holiday of the year. And people are going to go out tomorrow night, they're going to go out in droves, they're going to stand in lines outside of bars while they wait, because there's capacities now. They're not going to wear masks, they're going to hug each other, because they haven't seen each other in forever. People are going to spread the virus around, they're going to take it home and they're going to give it to their parents, they're going to give it to their sick housemates. And people are going to be in the hospital because of this. And we really need to do anything to prevent it from happening. And I understand that there are drastic economic implications from it, and the last thing in the world that I want to do is take any more money out of the wallet. To people who are already for the last eight months because of this diseases going around. But when you.
We lost you, Alderman Laws.
Yeah. Our responsibility, at least in this crazy situation. I have a point, but I don't, other than if there's anything that we can do, can we just do it before it's too late? Because we don't want to have this conversation a couple of days and realize that we really missed an opportunity. That being said, I love you all. All, I hope you all stay safe, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alderman Laws. Anyone else? Alderman Cleaver? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
First of all, happy Thanksgiving to all, all the city employees, all the aldermen and everybody associated with this call. Secondly, I would like to recognize Alderman June Karen for all the fantastic work she's been doing for the Nashville Senior Center. I think she doesn't get recognized for all the effort she puts forth there. And lastly, I'd like to say that the building at 55 Franklin Street was originally built by Nashville Corporation as a research and test center. Laboratory for new products. And a lot of fantastic work was done there by very smart people in creating products to be sold all over the world. So that building has a lot of history, just like to point that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Cleaver. Anyone else? I'm sorry, I missed Alderman Karen, Alderman Karen and then Alderman Clemmons.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for those kind words, Alderman Cleaver. At this time, I want to thank Park and Recreation Department, Kelly, Jeff, Sue, and all the other employees. And Mayor Donches for helping us celebrate 50 years of the Park Recreation Senior Outing, which took place last Sunday at Stelo Stadium with a drive-by pickup dinner that was provided by Fattello's. And it was fabulous. And I did get some phone calls and emails from people saying that it was great that we were able to do this. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to celebrate 50 plus one. I can't believe that it's been 50 years of that event, which started because Noel Trotia, who was the recreation director at the time, felt that we had to find a way to thank our seniors for being here, for being part of the city for so long. And it was a way of saying thank you. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them, because it was cold out there, but it was nice, everybody was happy. And I myself appreciated it very much. And to all my colleagues and everyone throughout the city, please have a safe, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you very much. I was going to comment on what Alderman Cleaver was saying. I actually had, back in the day, a radar detector that was made in that Franklin Street building. So it was definitely a pretty cool place. But in any case. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. No matter how you're spending it, please do it safely and, you know, make sure that you're adhering to all the guidelines. And, but most importantly, don't eat too much, save some room for dessert. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Lou?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you are all safe, and I know that my family usually comes to my house, I usually have between 27 and 30 people, not this year. Yeah, I, I've done it every year for the last 25 years. And, you know, I think it's smart not to do it, because I want to be able to celebrate with these people next Thanksgiving. So, you know, looking at it that way, I really hope that people take heed of the advice of Dr. Wolf-Frozenblum and all the medical professionals who are telling us that family gatherings are, you know, spreaders. And. I just hope everyone has a safe and responsible Thanksgiving. Also like to wish a happy birthday to Alderman Cleve. And I'd like to thank everyone for their attention tonight. It was a long meeting, but we got a lot of good work done tonight. So thank you all very much for that. Alderman O'Brien? You're on mute, Alderman O'Brien?
Having great day, Trish. My most important thing, and I'm on mute, sorry about that. I would like to make a motion that the November 24th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Town?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tanza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
No.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gethright?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You're 14 yeas and one nay.
And Alderman Laws, we all love you too. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We are adjourned at 10:07 PM.